We've been talking about this for a year. There's so much redundancy in a lot of things, like tickets in for paid or tickets in for lead. The one thing paid does differently is they actually build models. But all, but most of the work are at a concrete requirement, which is what this other work is doing entirely for a line. So like, this just doesn't make sense anymore. What do we do? We could just keep managing this, but I can see it's dysfunctional and awkward. Like, we're not aligned. We need to align the way that we're from where we're growing. It's not where we are, it's somewhere in an emergency.
Yeah, you have to figure out how you want to.
Exactly. And this creates real...
Yes.
This week? Okay. Well, that's an exciting challenge. It is. I have another meeting here at eleven forty-five. It is today. So we just, I was going there, people just come out of town. So it just was a great opportunity to go, okay. But this is a sexy thing, it's not looking at students, but now that I've got this thing, okay. We can sit on this a while longer, but why? Why? We're gonna have to do this anyway. So we're aligning according to that program, our business audit and AI. So we're gonna have AIG operations team that does mail fact, mail operations, delivery, transportation. We're gonna have the money team that does finance, fraud, contract fraud, the retail operation, how to process accounts, cost pricing, investments. And then we're gonna have the strategic operations healthcare team. Just like the provider, kind of these bigger products that work stuff. They need to support for our own. So support for these kind of more ethereal strategic concepts. To be aligned like that, so then it makes it really easy for anybody in audit to know, okay, that's my team. Because right now, when you're at an audit, it's like, all right, I need data analytics help, do I go to paid? Do I go to lead? Do I go to the coordination group? Like, they've got an audit, some of their expert house with us. So I think they've been dumping all their requests on this guy. And it's like, I'm not here to do all the analytics requests. I'm here to be a liaison between audit, AI, CEO. Please, like, you know, if you're those audits, that we're not getting their requests, are we putting in tickets? No. Right, because all this kind of, because everything's not aligned. Now it'll be like transportation director, you're your transportation manager, and then the team. And then there's the subject matter expert analyst, which also will understand the difference between data analytics and data analysis. So analyst and the data analytics, they're all on the same team. And then we got our SaaS power users, one in each team. We have our GIS people, one in each team. What's that? Isn't that smart? We have contractors all pulled together, so they all have CEO, pull on them, please support everything. But it's coming with the typical learning curve adjustment. Like, there's still some, where does this go?
And we have this many entry people that are wondering.
We have two power users, one coming up. So yeah, we're trying to grow.
And you know, in the day, you have to manage.
I do know that. Like, to GIS?
Yeah. In fact, you have seven servers. So you could plug in here. I set the audio quality from here to on. I turn them on. Yeah, so not a lot of things. So right now, and you're not invited, you know that one.
Right.
That one is where that would be able to go all together. I mean, I can do it, I mean, I go in and I turn it on. And it's like, you know. So I don't want to say, you guys don't have that. If you get this, you get new ones. But if you have to answer for that, you're asking twice in a day. So all those analysts, that's what I'm saying. So a lot of it, I just hope that they, as a brand.
And I don't mean Aaron to do that.
No. Because they just turn it on. And you're seeing it July, every time. I see your mind going. So you have to take care of that.
Right. You're great, it's a key part. You're tall, but you're like, I have to be something. You're very, very, very great. So I mean, every time I get a new hire, they're, they have to, they run off.
I mean, you're, you're all the time. I know what you're saying.
Right. So you guys know what we're looking to do. There's the AIG team for everyone to work on.
Yeah. Well, once, yeah. So you need your analysts to focus on that. That's like, it's like, it's like a joy gate of the world. First, we add a member. My first. Yeah, let's have like, you're at an, I'm like, oh, this is my looking for.
And so people are allowed to submit ideas of things that they want to see. Her, Higgy, Tey, IG, first by her, everyone gets to work out money and that. It's so cool. Please look him up with that idea. He's a cool baby. She is cool, but she's also in that room. The person I would expect, yeah, the person I'd expect the least to kind of adopt my way of thinking because of our age gap. Like she's at retirement age and she's sitting there going, you know what? We should turn this into a game. Yeah, they're okay. They all kind of agree on it. Or like this is your mindset. It could be better for you. Because my mom will take her very bad attitude and get a little bit of change. So when I see that kind of stuff, and like one of the, one of Tammy's five book series for this year is increasing engagement and connecting to the workforce. This is the same team that was like Carla bashing, Carla bashing, Carla bashing. We don't do engagement. We don't do team building. We don't do any of that. And now one of our top five book series is how do we make the OIG more connected and engaged? That's so cool. So I see me adapting them and I see them adapting to me.
Can you imagine?
Exactly. That's what I said. I said, Tammy, I think you're confused. And I got corrected a couple of times. I said, Tammy, I think you, I think you think I'm just trying to like engage them for engagement. So I'm not, don't confuse me with Carla. I said, engagement is the key to results. The more your people like working here, the more they will work. If they don't like working here, they're coming in and they're getting by in the year minimum. I've learned how to build engagement and connect people to drive results. And I said, Tammy, now believe me later, it all looks like bubbles of issues and fun. But the fact is, our team's good reviews. This last year, she had taken all offsite. We had identified our top five accomplishments, all the energy you've really raised from this effort. Five accomplishments of last year, two of them were senior. Forty percent of our top accomplishments came from Carla's 20 years. Why? Because we invested in that engagement in the beginning. So I see it as people, I don't need all this stuff. I don't really need to jump to anything. Actually, we all change a lot these 19s or 20s right now. Like what you're doing, you're like, oh, this is amazing. Like other people, I don't know.
Because you're going to instantly, yeah, you're not right.
Well, and you're, you're the ants thing, like nobody cares about the ants. You're like, you're looking at the other stuff. You're just, you're a man. And we have a fair lot of people who are like, you know, I feel like you have to adapt. I'm great. Yeah, and they're innovative. It would be true. It would be incredible if we have to be really comfortable with the goalposts being drawn out real far. There's a lot of deals here to play in. Because if you're not comfortable absorbing that, you're just very little structured. Like audit is very structured. And so we attract people with light, you know, with light. I feel like I have to protect today. I have like all lots of ideas. People have it. They are, it's the worst. It's sad. It's really sad. And then people are there. You know, I see. As we do, is he?
I, um, he was miserable at OIG.
And he was like, I'm no man. Like maybe you're wrong, get out of here. Stop. Nothing would happen. That was fine.
Yeah.
And now, um, my account executive, I was like, oh. He's always trying to do what I like, you know? And I'm like, oh, I, I'm sure he's very, 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 very. But it's not a good one. Who did that? And you just want it immediately. And I was like, let's, I was like, wow. I never met him. He is one of my predecessors. He has. I changed, I respect her. And I'm like, oh, you want to have, yeah, all of you. You know, you know, it's turned out my dad was really helping out. I admit, I embrace that, yeah, like people, like people help me out. Absolutely. So. Like, I'm like, who are? I never get along. You're lucky that you're here, but you're still on the front. And. So when people want to knock it, he was, he was. I never had him. Cause when I took over, he got detailed to CIO. I mean, he was technically with us, but he was detailed to CIO. And I started my one-on-one interview with him. Yeah, it was fine. I mean, yeah, my head felt like he was over at CIO working on Prime 2.0. The whole time I've been here. So I never worked with him. Yeah, I don't know why it wasn't here. Maybe it's different. Maybe he's the same person. There is something here, uh, that he wants to do. Uh, maybe he's responsible, you know? I don't know. It was, I was like, well, maybe it's. It helps me. Yeah. I wanted to read it by, because my, and you know, nothing's there. Now, I say, what are we doing? Nothing. I say, what are we doing? What is, how are we making this all back here? So when I, so that's a couple of years to come. No one's been, and I get a job. My lawyer, he's, 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 and I'm. And I told him, this is what I have to do years ago, and even though you busted it, he didn't do it. Just so you know, I was like, holy, I was like, well, I was like. Are you sure it's, there's nothing for you to do that? I don't know. I love it. I just said, I love it. These people, you know, I'm like, I mean, that's fine. I guess. Like, you know, I mean, you know, I'm like, doesn't even know what happened. We need to have. Everybody needs to be, to be, to be, to be. There are other items why I had to interview with. What do you mean? Like why? Because I need this SaaS guy so we can, this is mine. I don't. Not at all. I'm stuck in this situation where I have more people than I'm supposed to have. They're cutting a bunch of working in numbers that we have been trying to avoid lately. So the AIG is, I mean, this is in serious. We're, we're. There was one month, we didn't know that we were going to pay a lot of money here. Because we're, we're operating on fake money right now. We know that the money that we're going to get is not our CIO. We have all this money theoretically that we're allowed to spend this money. We know this budget is money, but we're going to lose 25 million dollars. And then we're having, we're giving us synapse, like Sticky and others at our CIO. But we're having to pay out. We need to build millions of dollars of bills. Knowing we're not going to get that money. The money is already, now we're operating, we're operating at a strategic deficit. We technically have the money right now, but we're not going to have the money to go to manage this, right? And all going in the land. We don't want to, so we stopped, we stopped hiring. So we incited months ago, we all hiring, we don't lose nutrition. By the time we hit March, people were going to speak up right at the funding level. So we need to come out. So we're increasing hiring. I've already lost two people. I'm losing at least two more and I've transferred out five. So I'm now with whatever just putting by the end of April. I'm operating at 10% under, I'm going to go from 10% to 10% under. It is good, but I'm losing critical resources. Like I need another GIS expert person to handle damage back to our, right? I can't beat. Erin is a single point of failure for me if she leaves on post. I don't want to be in a position where I'm posed to certain people. I mean, my SaaS, my SaaS bench is pretty even, or I'm trying to do. If one of those three guys needs, right? I can't do that. These are scary. One of my scared predicaments is, I need another. I can't, I can't do it. I don't have another debt payment. What do I do? So we go, you can start, my options are, I can, I can leave on Mike for his manager skills, director leadership skills, and not have run, I'm not giving you the financial portfolio. Finance, project, fraud, cost pricing, investments, manage the 16 people that are going to be under that group. Or I can have Mike manage our SaaS, user experience, interface. I think it's a great idea. Great, like very relevant. I have a great relationship with my manager there. But that's now more of the reputation. He can, he knows all these people, they have credibility, he's great with them. So when I'm thinking about my team getting smaller, right? The people in the dugout are getting less and less and less. There are a lot of people that aren't broken into OIG. He's going to, he's already like, okay, you think down. He's not actually, I scramble again. To get a customer reference, right? You have to have my, 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 say, can you do that? And I'm going to call them. And then they said, yeah, okay. And then, and then he said, okay, well, put off for a couple of months. And so can I call them? Yeah, I could call them now. Because in a couple of months, I want to go to, where I have to go in my, my. Oh, and my team knew that. You can't just have it. So he called, so he got that. I'm not saying it's getting it wrong. He was on, so I could call him. Right? Yeah. Yeah. But like. We need, this is, this would be a, I don't think I would need anyone. Right now, to do this, I'm like, I'm really, I'm like, you said, if this will, this, uh, the time we actually get out of money for that. I can't do that. I've already seen it happen. I'm already seeing it. It's like, I get these stats to find out my SaaS. And then they're getting this log, you know, that our team, what's their part? It's really hard to put all the content in email to keep it damp and get started. I have a stack that goes with the email, and what does it say? Logs, things, checks. And so, right, like he clicks on a link and it goes to, and here we're on a video that has something to do with this. And then I've lost him. Right? He's just spent seven minutes on it, and he's gone. And I have a new, right, I have a new user of the SaaS. And I'm talking, I'm starting to, um, yeah, there is, either we're on the, um, they're going to say, oh, we shouldn't mind that. No matter how much we go around it. Yeah. So a few more years ago, I still, you know, I, so I don't know. I can't say it's legitimate. Um, it could be because I can't. I don't understand this quite. So I'm not saying that they're wrong. I'm just saying, so I'm just. I was talking about, politicians, I mean, they may be handling it, having, and, and. But they, but I'm not sure if it turns on, if it's all of the information, like carried around. Also, we're in an area, you're, and Russia, and then it's back to all Russia. And it claims it's Russia, and I think it's, it's, it's. I'm like, after a couple of weeks, like, if your claim is so great, I would. So she sends me this address. So I go over to her. You're excited about it, I'm excited. I run it through, I reach her, I do, I get her, I'm like, okay, I got it. I, I, I'm much more active, I think. I'm calling, they're like, for the SaaS, they're like, so we can rely on you and something. So then I am, and so I'm sending. And I look at the chat, I'm like, look, it's a good sign, guys. And this automatic data job, I, it's 40 seconds to do it. And then, nothing else. I would hope to, I get to see, I also, I get, I get, I get. Yeah, yeah. And I had a, yeah, and I'm, I don't know how long that topic is. Don't you want to see my comp? They're, they're, they're talking center, right? And maybe you want to make it. And they're like, no, we don't want to see it. I said, you want me to come with them? I built a dashboard, I started to reach out with every map and all the posts with them. And they're like, Edro, back there. She also, I, I'm scared she'll, she'll. I might be thinking, oh, money, let me find out. I'll find out what they're thinking, and why not even listen to you? Maybe she got some stuff. No, no, yeah, yeah. I mean, I love her. I, I, I'm not saying this anything wrong. I'm just saying, we should have tried to think that. And I think, like, even, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. I literally just, right?